Good morning. It is Friday morning, December 17. This is the work session, the American Rescue Plan Act work session for the Board of Supervisors. An update from our yesterday's meeting is Lisa Murphy and I do have a meeting to turn with ISAC for Wednesday morning at nine. So hopefully we'll have some additional information we can provide after that. After that meeting. Yes. Yesterday, we were reviewing the external applications and I think we wanted to take a look at, there's going to be some more questions, but we're also kind of looking at the wastewater in the area that we hadn't really looked at yesterday with the DNR information. And I know Leanne was not able to be here yesterday, but we had some questions for her. We have some thoughts of what we'd like to do with those particular areas, whatever, so we could start with that before we move on to the internal application. And then we also need to discuss the expectation for a meeting on Monday afternoon. I do know we're looking at two o'clock in the afternoon. Okay. And what we'd like to have on that agenda, if you'd be ready to talk. Well, I think one thing you talked about was, I think Amelia was going to look at the broadband area. And Leanne wasn't here yesterday and we're going to touch base with you on that too. That we asked, if you could get with her and you two could talk about what you think about the broadband proposals.
Amelia actually called me this morning. She might be ready to pop up this morning. So we'll see. We'll see if she is or not. She said, is there any specific, just if it didn't come up, we'll say yeah.
Okay. The other thing, as I sent an email to Kim to the agenda today, because I think she has some expertise that we probably don't have in water and wastewater treatment. I haven't heard back from her, but I asked if she thought she might be able to be helpful and might get a chance to look at them. And but I haven't seen anything from her yet. But possibly to, I'd like a little more information. I looked at the DNR stuff and I don't know that it helped me that much more. I'd like a little more expertise in that. And I thought probably she would be the person who's going to come to staff person who has her background. So we might want to wait till Monday if we can. I haven't heard back from her.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. And Lisa and I will have some additional information until after our meeting on a Wednesday. And I don't know when we have a meeting set for after that. So I'm just trying to
Figure out if we need a meeting to have a meeting? I mean, yeah, I mean, if I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we can have the meeting on Tuesday. It may be a shorter meeting of information.
Right.
But then we're having a meeting Wednesday morning. What time do you need to move to morning?
Nine o'clock.
And then I don't know that we have another one of our work process sessions.
I don't think we do.
Right. I don't think we do.
What if we just mess for an hour after you two go off?
I have a 10 o'clock meeting that you have a 10.
Yeah, I have an 11 o'clock. And so.
If we have a new look that day. That's great.
I'm free.
What day? Wednesday?
The 22nd.
Now you're in negotiations.
Yeah, Monday, Wednesday. But I mean, it's not like you, me, me, I could just catch up. I mean.
Or if you want them. I know unless you're gone the next week.
Couple days. I think, well, I don't know about anybody else, but
Monday's a holiday.
That's a holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't work Monday or Friday that week. So.
Friday's a holiday.
So there's a whole lot of crap I got to get done in that little time, a three day week day.
Yeah.
You know, year end budget, all those things.
Right. Because then I think we'll be looking at that the week of the third. We have our Board of Supervisor meeting on Monday.
Oh, right.
What Tuesday morning? Tuesday morning, what morning?
January 4th.
4th, oh. Well, can we mother stop for a second and go back to Wednesday, the 22nd in the afternoon? I could do that. I could do that.
Yeah, Alyssa's the only one that is, and we can catch her up or she could listen to the.
Do we, so then the question is, do we want a meeting Monday or do we want to just do it all on Wednesday?
I think we should schedule another meeting after Wednesday.
No, I know, but we have a meeting set for this Monday.
For Monday, what do we?
Monday, the 20th.
And Leanne wants, Leanne wants the agenda for that.
The question is, do we have a meeting Monday where we were looking at hopefully Friday, you hear from Kimberly and Leanne, but they may need a little more time. I mean, I don't know what Kimberly's scheduling today either. And we were saying that for Amelia to come up on Monday, but she might be able to pop up today. Maybe Wednesday we work for that. Doesn't understand, like, why do people have a meeting? Might be a short meeting Monday, that's fine. And that helps us with the meeting on Wednesday, or do we want to just move it all to Wednesday?
That's, I would recommend that we just leave it on the on the calendar. And if we get to Monday and it's like, you know what, we just don't have enough, then.
Well, she's got to post the agenda today.
Right.
For Monday, and let's do Monday. Okay.
We could just put a hold on Wednesday afternoon for the work session. And we can always get it after Monday. We don't need it. We can say we don't need it. That's. And then the agenda for Monday.
No, I know.
It's a continued review of internal and external applications.
Yes.
Let's keep it broad. Does that work?
Oh, I've got two days.
Continue review of internal and external.
So what time do we want to look at then? On Wednesday, the 22nd. Do I do it two o'clock? As well?
I will do all that.
Two or afterwards would better for me, but.
Two. Two in the rest of the afternoon.
I'll put it on my calendar. I'm done bargaining. Or.
You go, girl. You go, girl.
Not done, but we might be done by that time out of it.
And keeping the Monday meeting up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll keep the Monday. Oh, I'm in 23, 2023. How did I get there?
It seems like a lot of meetings, but if we keep meeting, we're going to keep making progress.
Right.
And we can make, we can do shorter meetings than we have scheduled.
That's, yeah, that's fine. Then do we want to look at scheduling once a week of good research? Do we have one on?
Correct, yes. Probably hold in the morning and the fourth. Might be noon or something. That'd be fine. That will propose.
January 4th. And then we have our next ISAC meeting on Thursday, 13th.
January.
January, okay.
What else do we, is that everything for the agenda Monday?
I think that's, thank you enough, Leanne, for making that seven. Okay. We've got additional meetings set then. So was there anything more on external that we wanted to review at this time? Or do we want to go ahead and move on to internal and if Amelia's able to pump one up, then we'll just switch over to that?
That's good.
Okay.
You pre- grow wastewater. First thing is, we give all our input to DARLA separately before we end, so let's make sure we're consistent. We have three separate sets of notes that just kind of got shoved into here. My rescue, it looked like we were learning the same things. The phase two through five, $100,000 from 2014. That does not relate to the budget we have now.
No.
So we had a original opinion of 450 and he's guesting it in 700,000.
Which is, the 700, so he's put in the budget for three years. So he must feel it's a pretty, pretty reasonable amount.
He's got a lot of experience in working with process opinions and then having projects several years later and knowing how much to go up. So.
Well, it's been what, three, four years since he's.
Oh, we've got to.
Oh, goodness.
That's what it said, was they hadn't done.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we can safely say that 700 is the number you.
And we're not talking any of the phases, just doing the initial out of ARPA funds, is my understanding.
So the expenditure categories that gives yesterday, those are going to be the same print, what we call internal, external, infrastructure, whatever they are.
I put that at 5.5 in my information or my status. This is the one, this is, this amount has already been amended as the budget. It was moved from capital acquisition blah, blah, blah to ARPA. No money has been spent. So if you're going to, if you're going to not, not move this one forward, then we would need to unamend it out.
Okay. I think my only concern is how likely it is to get done.
Yeah, I think that is exactly.
Dragging for.
Right, right.
But let me ask this. It turns out that we, you know, and I can talk to Mike about this more. I do regularly. We could, we could amend it out later as well, if it doesn't happen.
So if we don't spend any money on it, yeah, that's easy. I mean, that's, that's an easy. That's an easy, oh, didn't, didn't do that. We, we said we were going to, it didn't happen.
You take out the R. And can we set a deadline for that? Like, if nothing has happened by X date, so that we have time to put it into a new project or reassign it to something else? Those are the dollars, so we don't lose those.
I think now we should, we could. And I think it would be a good thing to communicate to the Conservation Board. Because they would really like to see this come out of ARPA funds, because that means flexibility funds. So where did we have it? Was it, was it general fund or was, no, it wasn't. It was.
It was their camping revenue fund, capital.
And they would like to see camping revenue for other uses. I don't know what would be a reasonable deadline. Do you have any idea, given the?
Absolutely not. I can't give you a swig on that at all, because like I said, I've been messing with this, I've been moving this 700,000 since 2014.
Is this project, I'm sorry, is this dependent on, on another jurisdiction, like still in agreements with Colo, the state of Colo?
Yeah, and it's been bouncing around with attorneys and I can't say whose attorney it's with now. It's with the Central Iowa Water, I think they got a new name. Water, you grow water.
Yeah, they do.
And I always forget their name, but it's with them or it's with city now where it is. But I will follow up with Mike. And I will just ask him how soon do you think you can have an idea? Because we're not going to just let this, you know, if you're not going to be able to use these ARPA funds, we need to get them out in time for somebody else to use.
Right.
So I can follow.
I think the other thing too for us to look at is we're going to do that this week, but we, whether we change it to CIP, what's all in the CIP that's planned? You know, where does this factor in? Because we've seen a number of projects that are in there that don't always get completed. And I understand they're just circumstances beyond their control that, that delayed another, another year to help with that likelihood. What all, what all are they looking at? Is that really a reason or feasible that they go with that?
Yeah. And that's not just this. I'll give them a call.
One I have is edge field practices.
My sense from the last information we got is that the federal money is not an issue. Because it wouldn't be required match, it would just be other federal funds that got used. Is that what you?
That's our understanding as long as it's not a match.
So it's eligible. We have questions, but I think it's all eligible.
We're just going to put this under. Our quality.
5.9. That's what I, that's what I penciled in a long time ago.
That already, it would be a longer water.
50,000. But it was actually, was it very 5,700? The request was 50,000, but it, it's actually maybe less than that.
And that was based on China having no federal money coming. But I think that we also talked about who's was going to be someone, introduce someone South Dakota, but only do East India. 13 outlets. About the 40,000, this is mine, a lower for new 35,000, just not federal money associated with it. May not matter though. You know, I think if if 35 to 40, it's, it looks like at least down to 40. It might be less. So I think we can.
Questions next on the list is the McFarland restoration.
That project has started. We started paying out of ARPA funds and we moved it this year in the budget. From FY, it was in the FY '22 budget anyway.
What was the original source? General.
55.9 is what I moved. It's, it's 55.9 is what I moved, because that's what they told me to move. That's what they put in the budget. That's what I moved. And then they 55.9 is what I have in there.
So there may be a little extra money there.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
You've already started paying that.
They've already submitted claims for that, yes.
Go through them all. Should we then come back and see if we want to make any decisions today?
Well, are we, are we determining at this point whether they're eligible or not eligible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then maybe to go back through.
All right.
Bring it to a.
Also 5.9. No, I'm sorry. I did not. Yeah. It was part of the McFarland restoration.
So another not.
Now, did that request, was that one, the one that included the, the actual restoration?
No, not for that one. No, no, that's.
The actual restoration is like a 1.
1.2.
It's just a design.
Okay. Okay, I, no, that, that was me. I had just put that in.
I think this is the one that he didn't have the actual cost estimate for the restoration by the deadline. So he didn't submit for it.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure my notes are right here.
Yeah. His cost opinions, 1.2 million for the construction, probably a two-year project. Yeah, and I've got one too. Just repeats 1.2 million cost.
Yeah, and he put that in next year's budget from other pools, those funds.
So, construction, yeah.
Yeah, so he's not asking for ARPA funds for the construction.
But if we were to have a second round.
I don't know if he can get it done by '26. That's my guess. I, I could be wrong, but that's why I was guessing he did put it in.
I mean, we can talk about when we do the CIP.
That'd be pretty quick to get, oh, like restoration, that.
Oh, absolutely.
E is the land acquisition. Yes, which we, it's not eligible. This is where my formatting got wrong. So, so my, not eligible down to that. So E, the restoration. That it was not in CIP.
Oh.
I think what it's, it would, it's eligible, technically eligible, correct? I'm just wondering what your coding.
I did 5.9 on that one too. These conservation ones are really hard to figure out for me to know exactly where they fit in those places.
Right, well, and if they, if they qualify under the revolving funds, then they're eligible.
So, so, yeah. I think you're right. It's eligible. It's a matter of priority.
Right, right, right. Eligible, I'm going to put 5.9 in the question mark.
Right.
Consider. F, what's the, are we ready to move on? I don't want to be too quickly. F is the Heart of Iowa Trail. Think you were saying that this is not eligible.
I, I.
In our opinion, it's different, I think.
Um, so we were having an ISAC meeting with the whole group. And Jamie was talking about he was been impacted by Conservation Directors the next day. He had a meeting with, or he had, he was doing Zoom with the Conservation Directors and talking about, you know, uses and even though Rob Sands said, no prayers, Jamie is still convinced that they fit. So, so that's where it's coming from on the conservation end, as far as I can tell, is that, that ISAC is saying to them outdoor recreation, whatever.
I think it's because he said, he's not thinking where it's clearly stating that it's not.
Yeah, yes.
So, and I can graph probably, I mean, not that it's clearly that it is.
Right, right. It's a gray area. It's a gray area.
Let's just call it question mark. I, I don't know how we get.
I can't find a code for it. Does that help?
Yeah.
I mean, my code is blank on this one, because I really can't find a code for it, because.
Well, with COVID, Congress, Senate, Department of Commerce, Centers, PTE, medical expenses, capital investments, other COVID public health services. There's no.
You're right. So if the code isn't there, does that mean it's discouraged?
Well, it means that somebody'd be looking at it off the heart, because we'd have to put it under other public health services.
I mean, I don't know.
It's not disproportionately impacted. You know, I, I would tend to say that it's so iffy that I, I would say, let's say not eligible. Just if you can't find a code, it's not clear.
It's not clear.
Probably not eligible. Has Rob Sands been asked about this since?
Very beginning, very beginning.
It was at the beginning. It was at ISAC call and I was on it and I've got the notes and I just wondered if anybody gone back to him or there's just no, our auditor doesn't think it's eligible and our auditor's going to be doing the audit for our books. And honestly, there's, there's plenty of conservation stuff in there.
And there are, are other grants for trails typically.
Absolutely.
Get other funding. I mean, there's usually quite a bit out there, so.
Yeah, and Mike is really good at getting.
Yeah, he is really good at getting.
And I was just wondering. Yeah.
On to G is the front counter barrier.
The 72,000, 72,000 has been amended in, okay? Because that's what was in the original budget. The CIP and the conversations we've had with Joby, it's going to be higher than this because of animal control and engineer, okay? So at this point in time, we have 172 in. Because that's what was in the budget. So I can, I can amend in the additional.
72. Or 100, you said 172?
No, 72.
72, sorry.
I'm sorry, did I say 100? I'm like, oh, goodness. Send me home, please. I'm sorry. So it would just be a matter of upping that.
To the 125.
Right.
To the 152. 152.
Five, yep, to include that. Those are the architecture costs or whatever.
Right. So I think the question that comes, is that what we're wanting to do as well is allow, allow that change in applications, right?
No, his application, his application came in with the right amount in it.
Oh, that's right.
What was, it was the amount prior before you did the application.
That's right.
Yeah, the application, right. I'm pretty sure the application.
Yeah, because it had the
The two split out.
Yeah, right, right, right.
I, I remember. And I know he went, he just went back and asked everybody, you know.
Right, right, right.
And that's.
I, I remember. Application amount was correct.
Yep.
And what did you code this case of?
1.7. And those are all up for negotiation. If you guys don't agree with those codes, please don't be afraid to say no, Lisa, that doesn't fit, because.
I agree with that.
I.
Yeah.
The ones that were clear were easy for me, but the ones that weren't, were not easy for me.
Okay, so.
Next, H is the HVAC.
Yeah, and that, my formatting was off there too. The new project was supposed to be a high.
This might be. This might be A phase, but it, this is, this portion is new.
Correct.
It's a different building.
No, this is the justice center.
This is still the justice center.
The next one. Would you, you put that under 1.7 also?
Oh, yeah, that's also under 1.7.
I was wondering 1.7.
And we did move 1.347 in that.
Okay.
From, from the original funding source to ARPA. And then they have started paying them.
So, I with the HCF HVAC. And I'm going to send your coding as 1.7 as well.
Correct. You're getting it.
Questions with, with I, with Jake? With Jake, that COVID testing equipment for the jail.
It's different.
Doesn't differ, but that's different.
Okay.
So the COVID testing equipment is just.
Oh, yeah, for the inmates.
Yeah. Oh, I, I have the same thought. It's like, wait, is that?
I put that as a 1.4. I thought that was pretty clear. As far as eligibility.
1K with the. The video upgrade. The one thing noted with, with this one is the submission date, that the application was, was late.
I would say.
Hence, if you're working out, slip that late submission.
I think we should say it's not, yeah, I think we need to stay with that. I think it could be submitted to the board separately.
There was a plan to do that and.
Yeah, it's in the FY, the 23. Yeah, I actually.
Yeah, I was having a hard time really, really making it.
Oh, really? Because I, I did 1.8 on that one.
Yeah.
Did you? Other COVID public health expense, including communication enforcement, isolation.
Yeah, you know, I think that's like, they're looking at that.
They're using their.
Submission and we've said early on, we weren't going to take like, like submission.
Yeah.
Or whatever, so I'm going to take that for sure now, right? Tell them. This is, uh. The testing. Testing procedures. For employers.
Oh, if necessary. All of the, yeah, right now, but it would be eligible under, I, I would say 1.11.
1.1 and 1.2.
1.2, yeah.
I think you're all caught up in the courts right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the next one, that's one I was thinking of, the scanner, the telly for.
It doesn't scan the COVID system, which is, I'm saying. We could do. We could do scans without getting close to people. Of course, we still have to get close to people to do some other things, so.
It scans their temperature, correct?
Yeah.
So it does scan one piece of COVID symptom, or one COVID symptom.
Yeah.
I think that's how they threw it in there.
At the same time that it scans the contract ban.
There were a lot of counties that put these in. Like COVID started. When they're entries, but.
How many employees will this require?
I don't know.
Well, does it, then, sorry, I know, I know the hospital has one.
And it's right.
There's. But they got someone sitting right there.
Right there.
Pretty much we have to require or having.
It, it would take somebody, I think.
I mean, wouldn't that be part of their intake?
I think so. Because it's more for prisoners.
Yeah.
I might just give us our answer just soon.
Yeah.
My question is.
Yeah.
This is one I had a hard time, I had a hard time with as well. I'll just suggest that we consider it not eligible.
I don't. We have your opinion. I think it's eligible. I do think it's eligible. It may be a decision about whether we're funding something right now. That, that might be a different conversation. But I think it's eligible because it stands for temperatures. It allows for some distance between. But it is eligible, but a question mark, and they've done a, is that a priority area? Because were you able to find a code area?
Well, I did the same on 1.4 on that one.
You did 1.4.
Now, understand, I, I don't disagree with Latifah as far as, that's such a small portion of it.
Right. Right, right. Well, and that, that was where I landed when we went through them the first time.
Right.
Where I was like. But, yeah. Next one is the vaccine, the COVID reference.
I had 1.8 on that one and we have already amended that into the budget. It was, it was planned, no, it was. Already started, not started. That's not the correct statement. Yeah, um. It was, it was budgeted, so I went ahead and moved it to ARPA funds because it obvious, well, we thought at the time it was pretty clear.
One. Is the steam base stabilization. You push it to.
Oh, right. Yeah, we put it in the budget. I put it at 5.9 also, so it's been moved during, it's been moved already.
I think you should, they will find a code area and if it's the, what is it, the clean water standard. The last one that I have on this, it's the digitized. Digitized for supervisor.
And again, that one was put into the FY 22 budget when we talked about it. Nope, has not been started, so I moved that also at the budget amendment time.
1.8.
1.8, yeah.
Really? Perfect.
Lucy, I love that.
Yeah.
So I have D and F that's not eligible. In K, excuse me. D, F, and K that we were, felt certain were not eligible. That my staff. We felt like eligible, but I have a question mark for E. Are they priority areas or? He said B is eligible. Yeah, I had done that. Eligible was coded at 5.9. That was the actual restoration one.
Yeah.
I think it was not CIP or whatever, so that was the question on priority. And then the telly or scanner was eligible. Whoever designed it, the question mark. You want to make any decisions on some today? Or do, yeah, or do you want to do that, or do you want to look at, or wanting to look at? Internal and external separately, or are we wanting to look at them more collectively?
Well, if we, you know, I, I think the internal. If, if you, we say, okay, we're going to, we're, we're not going to move these forward, so we're going to come forward to a board meeting and say, D not eligible, blah, blah, blah. And then decide which ones you want to move forward that aren't already. Talked about. Um, those often go on an agenda and get. Set.
Sure.
That's what I'm thinking, but.
Do you want to do internal first?
Absolutely, it's way easier and it's way smaller.
Enter, if you, if you go through the internals first.
Yes. Yeah, what were you thinking?
I think there's someone needing more information on.
Okay.
Like hipper grow wastewater. Is it going to be before we?
Well, no. Whatever, whatever you want to do. My thought on, on hipper grow wastewater is, yes, we all are, we're sitting here all talking about the fact that. Is it going to happen in that, that timeframe? We don't know. He's not going to know. It's not going to help to kick that one down the road. It's been applied for, it's eligible. Let, let's, let's say, okay, if, if nothing gets spent, then you know that those funds are going away.
Sure.
I mean, what additional information can he give us at this point in time? None. He's been budgeting this for, for, since 2014.
I think we just need to set a deadline.
A deadline, exactly.
And so I think the question was, what's a realistic deadline?
Right.
I can do that.
Right.
We just want to tally up and see where we are and see if we're comfortable.
With what number?
For the internals, what the internals ask.
Oh.
That, whatever you think you would. There's still a couple unique questions that are questionable. So I don't know if you want to include that. But if you know for sure that, hey, these projects. You know.
And right now, there's 2.3 million amended into, 2, 3, 5, 6 amended into the budget. For those projects that have already been moved.
Edge of field. I, I had 35.7.
Edge of field.
It's not a lot of money on the difference.
This is what I'm asking.
But this is not everything here.
No, this is, this is.
Right, okay. I just was like, thank you for sharing that.
What'd you say about edge of field? Oh, it's my, yeah, I took them, I, I noted to take 10,000.
Sleep at 40.
Yeah.
And with the Garland restoration. We know that it's for 55.9, but I haven't circled on here for 47.
Yeah, that, that's the one that's been nothing but a heartache for me because 47 is what he had the budget, 55.9 is what he requested. And, and I don't know the answer to the question.
And.
So 47 has been moved to ARPA funding.
Well, it says.
47 has been moved to ARPA contracting, or ARPA funds.
I identified for ARPA. Okay, so because on, on what I'm looking at on the S drive, we have McFarland restoration, but then down items not finalized. We have McFarland Lake Siltation wetland. So are those two different contracts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the, the McFarland restoration is the contract for, um, design. So that's just the design.
Okay.
The, the, down below the 500,000 is because he didn't know where.
Which, which application is that?
Well, I thought it was on C. I don't know if it is or not.
I, I think he included it.
I think he included it on C.
Okay, yeah. I did for my copy.
Uh, let me see.
Because it's not, it's not listed here, so I think that's why I'm getting confused.
Right. Yes, it's not listed there. You're right.
What we're looking at is the design.
Right.
And you've got 47 moved because that's what you were given, and I think we should change it to 47 for that.
Okay.
C.
Yeah, and, and that, that amount was one of those. No, that whole project was, I don't know, what, is he looking for additional funding? If so, then I'm going to put it down here in the what if. Okay. Uh, as far as I can tell, he put it in his regular budget, so it's not being requested of ARPA funds today.
What we just talked about a little bit ago.
Today.
Was kind of sort of.
Right.
I think on the edge of field practices, because of what we were told, we should move it up 50,000 to 40,000.
Yeah, we already did.
We did for you and I just talked about that.
Yes, that's right. Um. I'm just looking at the one page first, the numbers from internal apps. I've taken off F and K. And I think we just only did a discussion, E, the obstacle restoration, and M, the tech aid for, we were making. We were talking about those as lower priorities, so I wouldn't consider those right now.
That is, I would, I would compare, especially with E, since I'm. Said that it's not a strategic plan, it's not CIP or especially for E.
Trying to see, everything else I've still got in, but I'm just trying to see what we're looking at. What you got? Down from 8.8 to 3.1.
5 million. So. So the. If I'm hearing you right, the only thing that FY 23 would have in it at this point for a possible ARPA funding is the HVAC and the HSC. 400,000. 400,000.
I'm sorry, I was.
The only thing that the H or the FY '23 budget would have in it is the HVAC for HSC as a, as an option for ARPA funding.
Rest of them haven't been included in any FY '23 requests at this point.
Okay, thank you.
But the HSC HVAC was, I mean, that's a project.
That helps.
Yeah.
Give me, Leanne, did you have an exact number with those now?
Let me make sure, so. I have that on the screen. So A is 700,000. B is 40,000. C, 47,000. Taking out B. Taking out 155. H is 134, 7. HSC, 468. The total testing jail is 20,000. Taking out the video upgrade that we saw, the 607, 400. And taking out the tech 4 scanner. The quarterback scanning, 645. Southstone River utilization, 50,000 and then digitization.
Yeah. I can't say it either.
Digitization.
So, so I'm a little confused with your adding because you had. Under C, you show 55, 9, but then over to the far right, show 47.
We changed it.
It was asked. No, I know, I know that, but it, oh, you down changed it, okay.
Yeah.
Potential approval is what she was looking at.
No, okay, okay, I just didn't, I didn't see that column although. Yeah. 3508.
Okay.
Forward that we. Put those projects on our agenda.
And so just to be clear, it is taking out. D, F and K as well as. E and M.
That's my suggestion and revising and also revising some amounts because we have good information.
Looks like they're revised down.
And you know, this would be with an understanding that the 700,000, we'd put some kind of a date on that. And if we don't have any answer there, that it could be. That could be moved back into place, so to speak, and probably 607, 4 is kind of in the same category. Since we don't know what's going to happen regarding.
Yep, that's just our real swag, so it's number.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
We just needed if we, if it's a mandate.
Oh, the, that one.
Yeah, that's, that's 1.3 million that's.
Between, yep.
So I would just, I don't think we're doing promotions or anything like that here because this is just a work session. But I'd make the suggestion that we consider that plan on the internal apps at the next possible.
Or you're going to put that on or do you want to help or? Yeah.
Just verify the numbers.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a progress.
I know.
There, it would also give us time in case we get some. Odd news or whatever on our meeting Wednesday morning. If it's on the agenda, we can discuss it.
Right.
If one needs this, any, any information that is, that is provided.
Hopefully there aren't any huge changes. Communication, I guess, but.
And just because we're trying to repeat things and make sure that's in assumptions. Well, it goes back to, we don't know if we're going to get the second 9 million in January or June, which is for both states. So we know we've got this amount of money of the 9 million that we know we have now. We've committed three and a half for internal. So that leaves us five and a half at the minimum to look at. I think it's one way of looking at it, we say, we've got five and a half to look at right now, we'll get back to looking at externals. Or do you want to commit on the whole 18?
My thought would be to look at committing.
I don't know.
You won't spend. You won't spend half that internal stuff by June 30th.
Absolutely.
Right, 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 right. You're not going to have it all pulled down.
Probably the same on a lot of the externals.
Yeah.
What we're saying is on a reimbursement.
I mean, it, it six months.
We didn't look down on the externals, so we're going to do reimbursements on some things that we're going to drop on, on some things.
Did you have any luck with, or did you have any conversations with anybody regarding consulting on this? Busy time of year.
Yeah. Is there anything else before we get our dates set for, oh, Amelia's here.
Morning. Did you plan that?
No.
You are perfect.
Information. It said that, that I am now. Amelia has information today, but.
Yeah.
You want to set up here, Amelia, I'll change the spot. I will, I can definitely.
Everybody moved like yesterday.
Oh, that was fun though.
I need to get up and stretch.
Yeah. Okay. So. 14?
14.
Yeah, on the externals.
Yep.
See you later.
I looked into. The Treasury guidance for the broadband grants. And one thing that this application didn't provide is what level of service they're proposing. So we're encouraged to provide grants when there's 100 upload speed and 100 download speeds. And that's just not provided in the application. So if you want to ask what speeds were provided, that would be a good idea. And then. The other Treasury guidance said that we should be targeting under unserved areas. Which is a certain download speed of under the broadband definition of 25 downloads per second, 3 uploads. So the state of Iowa put together maps of areas that they thought were underserved. And the parks on this application aren't mapped that way. The city of Gilbert doesn't have any under or unserved areas. That said, we did our own survey and there were 23 responses in the city. They did an internet test with that survey, so we could see what speeds they were getting. Only one person in the internet test had a speed above 100. I think about half were, would be considered unserved. So, you know, I don't know what level of proof we want here, but we've got, you know, 23 survey responses that show. There's really low internet speeds in the city.
Interesting, that's 23 responses, 22 were under 100s?
Yes, and then of those 10 were under the definition of what broadband service.
How many census blocks are there in Gilbert?
Ooh, I don't know.
Because what we know about the OCIO maps, if one's a household and a census block has service, they consider.
Yeah.
Having service.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah.
And totally, I see people on Gilbert Facebook page all the time complaining about slow speeds and no speeds.
Yeah.
So we know the OCIO maps.
Are not great, yeah. So I wonder if it wouldn't be worth asking the applicant to provide more information on what internet providers are available. In Gilbert. Yeah, is there only one?
I don't know.
Do they have that info?
They should.
Yeah, I think Stratford, okay, there's some service. City administrator would probably know.
Okay.
Let me see, maybe answer the questions.
Okay.
If there's anybody there that has one side of coal. My speed was lower than 25, 3 when I did.
Yeah.
When I did that survey.
So I think there's a need likely.
So you would consider it potentially eligible?
Yeah. I would. Especially, I think. It's providing public access, which is something we should be prioritizing. The guidance said that we should be looking at like cooperatives and nonprofits and governments for these funds, not necessarily private sector. Businesses, so I think it might beat that criteria a little bit better than some of the others. I can move on to the next one.
Sure.
So 33, you heard about Valley. I not figure out what area they're proposing to serve from their application.
Nine houses.
Nine, nine houses somewhere.
McCallsburg.
Yeah, so it's rural.
It's rural McCallsburg.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, yeah.
There's like three or four blocks south of town. And OCIO does show a need. But I just don't know what block they're proposing. So that would be my follow-up question for that. They did say in their application, they were applying for NOFA 7, which are federal funds. They may be applying, but I don't know if they actually did.
I could not find them listed.
Okay. And I know they said they're providing fiber, but they again didn't say what speeds they're providing in their application. We don't know if they're providing 100 up and down. But you know, if it is in a census block that is a targeted service area that is unserved, it could meet. I wonder though, some of, once some of the census blocks are pretty remote south of town and it's a pretty expensive request.
Per, per, yeah, I didn't map per location, I'm like, holy crap.
So I just, I'd like more information on where these houses actually are. And I also wondered, is, are they cooperative technically? Are they private business or a telecom? So what does that? Private.
It's not a cooperative?
I don't know. I thought it was a cooperative.
Look at, she's going to Google that show.
I mean, that's.
Oh, she's, she's ahead of me. I was going to look it up.
Then 36 and 37. Were the manufactured housing communities. I cannot find any survey data that we did for the Ames communities or they're not targeted under the OCIO maps either. Nevada, we, they're not targeted under the state's maps, but we do have survey data that show it's pretty underserved or unserved. And in the Nevada application, the applicant said there's no viable broadband alternatives for this community. So maybe we could ask for more information on exactly what that means. That's 36.
36 is Nevada.
Yeah. But again. That one is so expensive.
But it looks like they were talking about running fiber from Ames all the way out to Nevada. I don't know, I don't know enough about how all that works, but. Is that usually how it works?
Well, depends where they connect into.
Yeah.
I mean, if they don't have any options, I'm sure they have to go.
They included the whole fiber from Ames. So they could use that for other purposes though.
Right.
That wouldn't be. So putting that full cost into this application is pretty.
Yeah. And I think the, the Treasury guidance said we should be encouraging last mile projects, so from existing transmission equipment to actual customers. I don't know if that is this, I don't, I don't think it is.
So you would consider that a middle mile?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's some last mile to it, but it's not all last mile.
George, you're here to.
The first 15. First 15. For 12, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I don't know, I will say, there is this concept called digital redlining. Where there's areas that service providers just won't provide service to because of, you know, socioeconomic demographics. And I'm wondering if this could be a situation where the applicant is correct, there's actually no other broadband provider providing service in these areas. So I'd like to give, ask them for more information on if that's truly the case, especially in Nevada where it's like that it was.
This, the most on the.
Southside 30.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I've seen like MetroNet going into Nevada, do you know if they've gone in over on the others?
That's a good question.
I know, I know they're, they're hooked up. I would think they do the whole, I mean, don't they do most?
I mean, what I hear from people is MetroNet goes right by my house, but I can't hook up because it's too expensive.
It's not expensive.
For, for them to run.
Yeah.
For them to be able to connect to their house. They're being told it's too expensive for MetroNet.
To do that. Oh, okay, yeah, they went right by in my yard, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of them, yeah.
You know, but I suppose there's some areas they're not going.
Yeah.
I don't understand and I don't understand how that works. I also don't understand why there would. Be a need to run a line from all the way, like, where does it come from? Like. If it's coming from Ames, could we not have some places in Nevada where it's?
You guys, it's hard to hear what she's, especially when we've got people on the, here, so. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Where is it?
Well, I'm sure they have to connect into something. So maybe that's the only connection they have access to.
Yeah.
I mean, the other places they might not, I mean, there might be no agreement, I'm not.
Yeah.
Real up to speed on, on this whole fiber stuff.
We could add.
But maybe there's no, but no other place for them to connect into or they couldn't get that, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know, or maybe they've got fiber in Ames, do they, does ICS already have?
I think so.
So they're going from their fiber names off the way with you, that's why.
But I'm like, why, why? I, yeah, again, I don't know enough about how it all works. But like if there's a place in Ames where they're getting it from, why couldn't there not be a place in Nevada? Why are we not talking about how to make a place in Nevada? Where.
Or provider in Nevada.
I, I don't, again, I don't know how it all works.
Yeah, I, so I guess my conclusion is no one provided enough information to figure out if they're eligible.
Thanks.
Well, I'm going to ask. The questions that you have and I don't know if you and Leanne have had a chance to talk.
No, I, I can email you.
But would you two be willing to do the follow-up on these?
Sure.
You've got questions.
Sure.
You know.
And I can look more into that transmission technology. Marcus was at on inspections this morning, or I would have asked him, he used to do communications technology in the military, so this is really his area.
Of expertise.
Yeah. So I can do some more digging and then I'll, I'll work with you, Leanne, on emails. So. Try to get that typed up today.
Yeah, maybe the email contact or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got them on our, on our spreadsheet, all the email contact.
Okay.
So.
Okay, great. That's my update.
I have it for spending time.
Yeah.
Looking at all of that.
Yeah, anything else on those that you wonder about or?
I don't know. Which ones?
37's Ames, 36 is Nevada.
It was after 4:30. Was that just the second one that came in after the deadline? Was that just the second one that came in after the deadline?
Number 37 came in at 9:40.
Oh. Okay. Well, and that's when they.
Well, after the deadline?
Yeah.
Oh.
But so 37 was after the deadline, but 36 was not?
I think 36 came in right before 4:40.
Okay.
Did you look at that one?
I'll look at 36 and see.
I can go look at the timestamp on the application.
Yeah.
This one is so confusing.
There's two different applications?
Yeah. Very. Yeah, I got, I went back and forth and back.
I did too.
Oval Home Market Square and. Yeah, if there, I mean, I'm just thinking. If there wanted to have to bring service to Nevada and there's already service, other service in Nevada, it seems like it would be cheaper for somebody else to do it and it would be paying.
That's the same way.
Yeah.
It's the same way.
In the market, not just do this. Yeah.
Yeah. That other class technical part will want that one. Yeah.
I thought the one, I thought the one was.
I thought there was one that came in right at 4:30 and then the other one didn't.
Are they both too late?
Yeah. I just want, if you're disqualified because of submission time.
Right.
I, I'm pretty sure there was one that was not in by 4:30. It came after, but.
But these were confusing as well.
These were terribly confusing and Sandra's concern was that there was IT issues possibly, or line cast issue or something. You know, do we want to hold up because of the fact that?
We got the first one.
Oh, I mean. I mean, I asked. Since April, we got the first, but the second one to say line cast makes sense. And it just doesn't always make sense. So like sometimes I get it, emails and so and so, and then, then they're telling me, oh, your emails are, oh, my emails are.
I wish, I wish there would have been some sort of an application put in to get rid of that. FYI.
I, I know it's frustrating. I, I, I know it. I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure there's just no perfect solution.
I'm sure there's no perfect solutions, but that one really bites. I'm going to tell you how it really did. Thanks, Amelia.
I had to archive them, so I can go back to them.
But here's other questions on these. It sounds like Amelia and Lea will do some follow-ups on these for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, um, I'm, I'm going to wonder if we want to do the same thing with the externals that you have determined you are not going to move forward on as far as not eligible. Getting that on the agenda.
Yep. I think we did that yesterday.
Well, we, we did that, but Lea wasn't here to listen to it.
Sure.
Put it together. Um, and, and I will work with Lea if you want, if you want her and I to sit down and, and put the forward for you, the not eligible, or the projects that we talked about yesterday that, that we don't think are eligible, that you don't think are eligible.
Let's go through them, just taking them.
The not eligible?
Yeah.
My records show four. 11. 19. 28. 34 and 35.
My apologies, I've not had time to.
I saw I, she wants to go. I was going to work with you on getting those put together, or getting those moving forward, if that's how they wanted to proceed. And get that on the agenda also.
Yeah, I am so sorry. 34 and 35, did you say?
That's right, yeah.
Yep. Did, did Henry's conversation change any thoughts on 35 for you guys?
I have the one thing, and I, I, I think we have, I put it down as a piece of my qualify, that's why I have a question mark on, was the Boys and Girls Club. So those were, it was still in the mix. Okay. Thinking I thought pieces were qualified.
Yeah, anything that there were still questions about part of it might, we might find part of it, yada, yada, yada. I'm not moving forward, it's not, not eligible at this point in your agenda.
I had texted to my computer and I didn't, I didn't plug it in last night, my computer just died, so I can't, I can't look at it. Just did, so that's why I was. Good asking that. So I, I, I do just want to make you crazy by saying that. Henry did, um, make the point that the reason that the owner of the Camelot Theater is selling at all is because they have to keep canceling shows and canceling shows and canceling shows. And it was just such a, it was a financial impact on their ability to stay open. So the foundation was trying to save the space and keep it. I think that's definitely an impact. I don't know where, you know, what plans were in the works before COVID. But the fact that they had to keep closing and canceling, and then even when they were starting to open up again, and I'm remembering this from when he, he was here the time before, he was saying people were scheduling to come and then canceling at the last minute.
Right.
Would that be more of a, of income? I mean, different than what they're asking for? Like the COVID piece of it?
Well.
Cause they're asking.
They're asking for renovation.
Renovations, but if, if they were asking for funds because of the COVID to take it over, would that be different than renovation? Or am I thinking the wrong way?
I know, I see what.
Yeah.
I understand, I'm following.
Yeah. I mean, if we wanted it to fall under a COVID, you know, helping businesses because of their revenue shortfall because of the COVID or, or something, that's different than doing a whole complete renovation. I mean, I know they're tying it to COVID. They're doing the re- renovation.
Because of it.
Because they're taking it over and, but it's, it's, it's a little gray for me.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
I think if we were going to code it, you'd code it on a 2.11, but we should.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yes.
I think I had 2.10, 2.11, and they were, and not, they were a nonprofit, but they were making. Right.
So.
Then I just wanted to talk through, I just wanted to talk through that, but.
It's confusing.
And, and. I think it was seriously negatively impacted by COVID, but the project itself.
Right. You can vote, you can vote to not, to not, not eligible. I'm doing whatever we do to.
No, I, I, I really just wanted
To talk.
To talk through.
Yeah.
Through it, because that was what I left the meeting yesterday feeling like, oh, and yeah, I just don't, yeah, I don't want to walk away from something that.
I agree, I think it's hard with all these good projects, but I also feel a little concerned with something so gray.
Yes.
Right.
And if we're having to do the justification and the reporting. I feel better to be as clear as I possibly can, because I don't want them coming back to us with the Hillstory County. You have to pay back this money, you know?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't that have been clearer in the application?
Part, part that?
I just said, why wouldn't that piece have been clearer in the application, the COVID connection, the stronger, stronger COVID.
Right, 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 right. You mean, so that we're not working so hard to justify it?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, Sandra didn't go and print her emails?
Well, yeah, we had a question about 37. As to whether or not it came in on time. It was date stamped 4:48, but there were problems opening the document, and there was a question as to whether or not it was held up by Coastmaster. You know, the extra security. Through IT stuff, and, and I'm not sure about that. I would have to do some more research to try and figure that out, but the time on it is 4:48 PM.
But the number 36 came in on time?
That was 4:16.
Yeah.
So that's okay.
Yeah.
We didn't accept any additional information that the applicant was trying to send days after. But it was just a question of what came in on up till the 15th as to whether or not that was held up by our system or whether it's the applicant's.
And I think even when you release them, it's got the initial time. I, I have to look.
We can check with IT.
Yeah, I think it comes in as the date and time it was sent, but you have to release them. I didn't release. Mine, it just came in. Pretty sure it came into my box, so.
That's one of the questions now.
Thank you.
Looking at number 37 is probably ineligible because it's late.
Yeah.
So do you want to add that one or do you want to wait?
It is worth double checking with IT on the date and see if.
Yeah.
They would say the B, and then if, if they say, oh no, that's the date.
They hit the server.
That's the submitted, then I say it's an awful, we can just give you that.
Okay, right. And you may know that yesterday or Monday or something.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
I'm not sure. I'm just thinking for me, if you're doing two different brand applications or whatever, you probably pull them up to get, you know, and submit it, and then you're and it got missing to something else and.
Well, they're about a half an hour apart.
Right.
So you get the first one and then you get the documents for the next one.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Certainly confusing.
Yeah.
Oh, those documents were really confusing anyway. I couldn't open any of them. My, I, none of them could open on that. None of them were.
So.
Yeah. They all were titled the same, a lot of them were titled the same thing. I thought it was.
That's very.
Multiple things. Like if we saved, saved that, the same thing.
Okay, so at this point in time, we're, we're waiting now for conversations about wastewater.
Yeah.
And you have, you have questions? Sandra, you, do you have people you're questioning? You're looking the YSS stuff up?
Yeah, I'm looking into that. I'm not sure if they should be ready for that, just in for, to provide that information, is that Monday or Wednesday?
You can get it by Monday, but, but if you don't have it till Wednesday, because I know it's Friday. Yeah, I get it.
Tell you what, I just got some, I got something from Kimberly. She said she'd be happy to try and assist on the wastewater. What I want to do is let her know what the documents are, and I could tell her where we have tentative dates Monday and Wednesday. And I know she could read on Monday, I mean, it's 10 o'clock on Friday. But can I just offer her both times?
Sure, sure.
So that, so that would help us get ethical information maybe.
Sure, sure.
And.
And I think since you've got to reach out to YSS, I mean, they would like it Monday, but at the latest, he wants it Wednesday morning, so that we're.
So who's reaching out to McCallsburg and, or to Minerva Valley and to Gilbert?
Amelia.
Amelia and I.
And I did reach out to Bridgetown. I asked for that information by, by Monday morning.
Okay. It sounds like we're making progress.
Is there anything else before we open to public comment?
Can't believe you said that.
What?
Chicken with gas. My grandmother said that.
Now it's the time for public comments. If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comments. R9, unmute yourself. The reset function. Hey, that'd be sexy to make sure. Right, I don't see anyone wanting to make public comment at this time, so with that, we'll adjourn and have our meeting on Monday then.